All right, I'm Gavellus, so let's get the show on the road. I'll call to order the town of Matt dessert planning board meeting for August 24th, 2022. Welcome aboard. We are still in hybrid territory here where we are partially in person and obviously online as well, and I'll make introductions first. So I'm William Hamley, I'm the chairman. We've got Dave Ashmore online. We've got Christie Anastasia online. We've got Gloria Kunjay online as well. She's an alternate member. And then with me in the meeting room too is Tracy Loftus Keller.
Hi there, I'm here.
And away we go. And Christie, I mean, I would think everybody is familiar with the Zoom world by now, but why don't we just give this quick spiel while we're here?
If you have not zoomed yet, you probably are from another planet, but I'll do this talk anyway. This is a hybrid meeting, you're on Zoom. If you're not muted, everyone can hear everything going on in your space, including around and behind you and in front of you. So mute yourself if you have noise going on around you. If you can get to the chat function, you can use that to enter your name and then we'll have you listed as a participant in this meeting, which is great for the public record. And we use the chat to sign in, but we don't use the chat to ask side questions. If you have a question, our honorable board chair will recognize you and you can ask that question. And we don't tend to mute people if they're making sounds. But if we have to, we we will if there's like just too much noise going on. And we can have something like 400 more people in this meeting according to our Zoom license. So I think there will be plenty of space.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. So next time the agenda, we have approval of minutes, and I think we have the shortest minutes to approve from the 10th, and that was just the hearing where this where we met to approve minutes. So anybody care to make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting where we approved minutes?
Tracy, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 10th as presented.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. And then next thing we need to do is bring Gloria on board as a participating member tonight.
I make a motion that Gloria Conja is brought on as a participating full participating board member for this meeting.
Tracy Keller, I am second.
All right, all those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Gracie?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Welcome aboard Gloria.
Thank you.
All right, so let's let's dive right into it. So item item three on the agenda tonight. Bear with me while I read through this. So we've got under other sections 3.4 and 69 roads and driveways. And what that says is that new roads and driveways are prohibited prohibited in a resource protection district or stream protection district, except that the planning board may grant a permit to construct a road or driveway to provide access to permitted uses within the district. A road or driveway may also be approved by the planning board in a resource protection district or stream protection district upon finding that no reasonable alternate route or location is available outside the district. When a road or driveway is permitted in a resource protection district or a stream protection district, the road or driveway shall be set back as far as practicable practicable as determined by the planning board from the normal high water line of the water body tributary stream or upland edge of a wetland. And tonight we have conditional use approval 009 2022. Owner name is Christian Arnold. Location is off the Southwest Valley Road tax mapping lot 53-001. And the zone is stream protection, conservation and rural woodlands too. And the purpose is installation of a driveway within the stream protection zoning district to a future one family dwelling. We had a site inspection at four o'clock and were a butters notified and this one advertised.
Yes, the butters were notified on August 11th and also not published in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Island are on August 11th.
Fantastic. And is there any conflict of interest on the board with this one? All right, none heard. We had a site visit at four o'clock. It's the myself Gloria and Christie were there and Gloria, how about we give you the honor of reporting on the site visit today? And we can, we can all chime in too, but Gloria, why don't you go for it? Tell us about your observations of the site visit today.
All right, so bear with me. This is my first time doing this. I was at the site on Southwest Value Road with Will and Anastasia and the purpose of that, I guess, is just to observe what they are proposing to to do. I'm not even sure if I'm doing this the right way. So Will, how about you help me out here? I was just there to observe and what they had to say about this site and what the intent to do on the site.
So we all, we all arrived at the end, kind of midway on the Southwest Valley Road and then Scott McFarlane was there, I guess, representing the applicant and I mistakenly referred to him as the applicant, but he was not. But he took us off the Southwest Valley Road down a path towards the there's a quite lovely stream back in, what would you say, Gloria, probably 200, 300 feet from where we were parked. Yeah, you know, you know, and it was a wide stream, a boulder filled stream. It was coming off of upland marsh area. And it, and if I recall the the history that one of the the butters was you know, letting us know about is that I believe it was an old tote road path to a quarry back in there. And I, it had obviously, you know, it looked like it had grown in over the years and but there was actually hints of an old kind of bulkhead crossing at that stream location. And then there was a, you know, kind of, we all stood on the little rickety bridge or walkway over it and just talked about the stream and the history of it. And there was a beaver dam up uphill from it and that this was you know, the primary route, proposed route back to the landlocked lot. And then we also inquired about access from Sergeant Brook Road, the subdivision road going up there. And it sounded like that just logistically was not feasible, given the multiple ownership and subdivision and and all that. So
You got a letter in there too from Nancy.
Yeah. And so any other observations Gloria?
I think you said it all, you said it well, then I would have, thank you.
Christie, anything to add?
Thinking, um. No, I mean, I think that 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 piece about there being some kind of tote road or road, I mean, it's all kind of crisscrossed and there's been a lot of habitation in that area. It's not, you know, pristine forest or anything.
Yeah. All right, there's the site report. And why don't we turn it over to the applicant from there and Mr. Arnold, why don't, why don't you tell us about our project, add to anything observed in the at the site visits and the floor is yours?
Oh, thank you. Thank you all for your time tonight. I think the summary you provided is pretty accurate. We've worked closely with Jim Bright, who is the a butter to the north to try to create a location that would minimize the, you know, impact to the area. And so hopefully kind of following the existing old historic road is our way of doing that. And, you know, like you said, it's kind of the only way to access that property back there. So our hope is that we're, you know, creating the shortest kind of and least amount of interruption to the beautiful area just to get across the stream for our driveway.
Great. I am gonna open it up for public comment. Mike, I and I'm sure you've got something to say as one of the butters to the property.
Yep. Hi, thank you. Hi, Christian. Nice to meet you. I I met with these guys out this afternoon. And I just wanted to bring it up that our property does extend past that Brook area on the right hand side. And if there's a little road going in, we would like to work out something so we can have access on that road since it will be the only way to access our property. And just to make sure that we can figure something out and put this on record that we're so we can work towards something. I think that's about it.
Mike Sweet.
Thank you.
All right, well. And any other public comment? And not hearing any, I'll close public comment. And we'll get on with the review of the application. So let's see, so this one, there, there's a couple layers of the cake here beyond our typical reviews. So we are going to go through the conditional use review application process. So that means we go through six A, B, and C where we are in the resource protection, stream protection specifically, that's going to push us into the shoreline review of section 5.9. And then we've got to just then circle back and look at sections 69 as well. And what was the other one?
It's 69.3. If you look at
Thank you. 69.3. And so first thing I'll ask is, you know, a motion to find the application complete. Going once.
Dave Ashmore, so so moved.
Anastasia, second.
Right. All those in favor, Dave?
We can't hear.
David, oh, yes.
Christie?
Anastasia, I, yes.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Gloria?
Yes.
Myself, William Hamley. Yes, so application is complete. Any any motion that comes to mind in particular concerning possibly using the short form checklist?
Anastasia, I make a proposal that the planning board uses the short form.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Gloria?
Gloria, yes.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
And myself, William Hamley, I. Short form it is. And then you do our weird little thing of any anybody care to make a motion to approve the application?
Anastasia, I make a motion to approve the application.
And we need a second.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, then we press pause and now we go through the review of the application and that is in the planning board handbook and I never understood that, but
Are you sure we don't need a motion to press pause?
That's one to talk to our, that's his name, Noel, about. All right, let's do this. Section 6A, general performance standards. We've got the short form checklist. I've got that conditional use application in front of me and let's just wave through it. So section 6A1 compatibility. In compatibility, we're talking about physical size, visual impact, proximity to other structures and density of development. And just under physical size, they talk about that there is a 12 foot wide travel service with 14 and a half foot clearance horizontal and vertical for emergency vehicles. There'll be a wider turning radius at the corner of driveway and it's, we've got an aerial photo with the zoning district. Visual impact, there's a thick buffer of trees, proximity to other structures. Please refer to aerial photos and density of development. Really, there's, there's just the house and garage on the property at the runs across the bright Whittington lot. So compatibility, C application. 6A2 erosion and sedimentation control. So here they talk about the D E P regulations and that the, the, the best management practices thereof. Talking about hay bales and salt fence and and disturb areas being stabilized. So C application. 6A3 highway safety. Really, it's a private road, so they'd say N A impact on town services. They said the installation of proposed driveway will not burden the capacity of town facilities. So C application. 6A5 land suitability. Appken talks about the installation, the proposed driver will not cause adverse environmental impacts or severe erosion. And that the stream crossing will comply with all D E P requirements and there's already a permit by rule issued by the department. So C application, 6A6 lighting. They say applicable standard mat. See application, 6A7 stormwater. We yeah, I'm just
6A6 should be N A.
Yeah, so yeah, so but on the application, it goes page five.
Six of 25. Seven tops, N A.
Yeah, I don't have a page six.
Six, that's good.
Seriously? Yeah, six is skipped.
Okay, the only thing you're missing is N A.
Right, so lighting outdoor, I would think and six, and then it goes to 6A7.
I think we're missing every other page maybe.
Yeah.
You're missing page seven and are you missing odd or even?
No, I have no.
11, yeah, we're missing even.
Six, eight, 12. Every fourth one or every
One, three.
All the evens, I have odds.
Yeah, we're missing the evens.
Right, all right, I'll help you with it then.
All right, thank you. So 6A7 stormwater.
Lookable standard mat.
See application. 6A8 vegetation. N A. And 6A9 dust fumes vapor, N A. So the findings of fact are presented by the applicant and the attached application and that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section 6A for which the standard has been met. If anybody wants to turn that into a motion, feel free.
So
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Gloria?
Gloria Conji, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. All right, section 6B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. Agriculture, N A, air landing sites, N A. Escavation in filling 6B7.
N A.
N A. 6B8 fences and walls, N A, 6B16, N A, 6B18 wireless communication facilities, N A, 6B19 animal husbandry. And a 6B20 mobile food vendors, N A, 6B21 rooming house, N A, and 6B22 hotels and motels, N A. So the findings of fact that proposed use include none of specific activities or land uses described in section 6B and the conclusion was that section 6B is not applicable.
You looking for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Anastasia, so moved.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Gracie?
Tracy Keller, I.
Gloria?
Gloria Conji, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Right, moving on, section 6C shoreline zoning standards for review. So we've got section 61 agriculture.
N A.
N A, and we've got 62 archaeological sites.
The map, it says application, applicable standard net.
See application, 65 essential services. And a 66 parking areas. 67 marine and freshwater structure standards.
Oh, wow, I'm sorry, right, N A.
N A. 69 roads and driveways.
Lookable standard mat.
See application. 611 water quality.
But full standard mat.
See application. So the findings of fact that the pure proposed use will include none of specific activities or land uses described in section 6 6C except for 62, 69 and 611. And the conclusion laws that section 60 is not applicable except for those sections for which the standard has been met. Go for it, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Gloria?
Gloria Conji, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. All right, and then since we are in the stream resource protections zone, we're gonna go through section 59s. The shoreline standards. And here we go, section 591 will maintain safe and healthful conditions. Appken says N A. 592 would not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. See application, 593 will adequately provide for disposal of all wastewater. And a 594 will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. So the C application. 593 will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. They say C application.
That was 595, not 593.
Thanks, 595. 596 will protect archaeological and historic resources designated with comp plan. See application, 597 will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing, the shoreline commercial district, N A, they're not in that district. 598 will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. See application and is in conformance with the provisions of section 6A, B, and C. Standard mat. And the findings of fact are C above and the conclusion was that all requirements the section 59 have been met. Then we need a motion.
So moved, Tracy Keller.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Gloria?
Gloria Conji, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. So then we flip to section 69.3. Tracy's got that out. So
That's nearly what you just read on the agenda.
Yeah.
So you guys are determining is the location of where the stream is proposed. The most practical place to put it. And you've already got a letter in here that there's no other reasonable alternative route. He tried to get a letter from subdivision to access Sergeant Brook Road and she denied it. And he received a right of way over Southwest Valley Road, which the current owner did not have. So he retained access from Southwest Valley Road onto the right of way that goes over Jim Bright and Harriet Whittington's property. And he's putting the driveway as close to the shared property line and trying to minimize the impact of crossing over the stream and not really into any wetland area, as you can see on the plans. So do you guys feel that he has a install the driveway into the locations that's the most practical both? And did he try? Did he prove that there's no other alternate reasonable alternative route to access the property? And the plan for 693. Let's return by the planning board.
Based upon what's been submitted to the board, what we observed on site and the D E P permit in place. I would say, yes, that's the I would say yes, that's the. Path of least resistance and the only path. Back to the slot available. You know. And the the thing I'm glad about is that they are following that existing token.
I was just gonna mention.
You know, and that there there are. Historical indications there of uh. You know, previous access over that stream at that point. You know, the. The one thing, you know, I I, you know, I just would be curious about is, you know, just. You know, what what is the bridge exactly going to be? Is it? What is the structure of the bridge? Just.
Yeah, I think to the um my understanding, and I'm by no means a a bridge expert. Uh but my understanding is it's going to be a concrete um like base and a concrete deck. And then it'll be a gravel over. Our hope is that it looks, I mean, what we're hoping to achieve is it looks kind of like one of the carriage road bridges that are just up the hill a little bit. So. With maybe a couple of boulders or something. So very natural, just trying to blend it in. So hopefully just disappears as much as possible. The other bridge that was put across Sergeant Brooke to the south is much like bigger and like. Steel painted and we're hoping to not have it be as so aesthetically like. Obvious, you know, uh just more minimal and natural is what we're going for.
Got it. So back to the board and their opinion on um. You know, is this, is this the most practical means to get back to the site, given the constraints um we've all. Been informed of. And so we're probably gonna need a. A motion on that. And um if you guys have any further discussion, let's talk about it.
Um, the only question I have is uh. Is there any point where we get anything that shows uh the plans for the bridge?
You can certainly ask for those if you want it from the applicant.
Have we done that before? I mean, it seems like it it would be, it would be nice to see that. I mean, I hear what's being said. Um, but I feel like that that seems like that's part of the process here to me. I don't know how other people on the board feel, but. And I I don't need to see that as any part of the approval, but it seems like it should be part of the. Package or some part of the process.
I mean, we could simply ask the applicant to submit a. Some detail.
A sketch plan.
Yeah, on the on the bridge can. Construction. I don't know if we want to make that as a condition of approval or not, or a permit requirement or.
Well, he's gonna have to provide it when he applies for the permit. For driveway.
Okay, so there's a point in the process where that's gonna have to be provided.
Yeah, he's gonna have to provide details of the bridge crossing. Um I don't know what was submitted to D E P if they asked for any details. Maybe Mr. Arnold could explain that to us.
Yeah, they did not ask for any further details. They just wanted to see the location. And then the de- the details are pretty clearly governed with the, you know, the regulations within D E P and with the. Town of Mount Desert, so that it has to comply with those regulations, so that they didn't ask for anything further.
Yeah. You know, Christie, it sounds like a similar bridge type to the one we just reviewed at the Beach Hill Crossroads for the town. Over um Denning.
Yeah, that one's a boxed. Culvert that they're doing.
Oh, the one going over to Little Echo Lake.
Yeah, that's a box culvert. It's kind of different, I think, than what Mr. Arnold's um ideally doing. Not as much, but he'll have to, he'll have to provide specifications on that bridge when he submits those. Permit driveway permit.
But the the thing I was I was wanting to hear about Christie too is that, you know, that it's a. It it technically is a bridge, you know, it's it's a raised platform with the water, the stream courseway. Able to continue to flow below it. They're not just filling and putting a culvert in, you know, a giant culvert or anything like that. And then and then the travel wave will be elevated and continue to have a. A gravel surface, you know, I'm sure is the driveway.
I think everyone remembers the rains of June ninth last year and what happened to that whole section of the road when all the rain, we had those microbursts and it sheeted off the mountain. Um. So I mean, yeah, not a bridge engineer, but it seems like somewhere, somewhere in the process, there should be something with the um plans of what is to be built there.
So so there will be for the construction permit.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Okay. Dave's got anything?
No, no, no further comment.
Gloria, any further comment?
No further comment. Thank you.
Right, we just.
I'm laughing because I was gonna ask if there were any plans quarry in the area with the old road that goes to quarry.
Well, the I think we all know by now there will be only one and only. Quarry in the town. If it was ever approved.
I have nothing. I'm good.
Right. Anybody wanna try for a motion?
Are we just picking up back up on our motion to approve?
No, I think we need a.
You need to move and approve sixty nine three.
Yeah.
Oh.
That it's the most practicable way to get back to the lot.
Unless I'm back.
Did somebody motion that?
No.
Oh, I thought I heard somebody motion that. Um, can I motion that, Anastasia?
Yes.
What's the motion?
What's the motion?
You gotta tie it to six nine. Um, C three. Six, or is it sixty?
Sixty nine C three?
Six.
C.
Nine three.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, sixty nine three. Um, I make a motion that this application. Um, meets the standard as described in sixty nine three. Um. What's the language I'm looking for for the most, to the most practicability?
Practical ball.
Yeah, for the um installation of a driveway um and within the stream protection district. You find upon a finding that no alternative. Route. Or location is available outside. Um, the stream protection district area. Because a lot has the whole stream protection going all through the front. Um. Access uh request was denied. From the abutting. Property of the Sergeant Brooks subdivision. Um, and that the location. Of the proposed driveway and bridge is within. The best. Practicable area as determined. I guess on the land. Therefore, therefore we find sixty nine three has met.
The standards.
Standards of sixty nine three have been met.
Okay. It sounds like we don't have Heidi in there.
No, I'm here.
She's here.
Okay, did you catch what Kim just said?
Sure. Uh, okay. So. Upon finding no alternative location or route outside the street. Uh, outside of the stream protection area.
District.
District. District um and alternative access requested was denied by abutting property owners.
Subdivision. Do we want to be specific and say the Sergeant Burke subdivision?
Yeah, I'd say from the abutting sergeant, yeah, subdivision.
And that's their their official name.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Let's start over here. Upon finding no alternative location or route outside of the stream protection district. And uh access requested, alternative access requested. Was denied by the abutting property owner Sergeant Brooks subdivision. The location of the proposed is in the best practicable area as determined by the board and. And the board finds standards of section sixty nine three have been met.
I would. Yeah, no, you're good. I would add also um and as approved by the Department of Environmental Protection. I would add that to it.
You're gonna cite the permit by rule number?
I don't think it needs to because the program by rules gonna be in the back. I'm trying to look for Nancy Hall's letter and for the back, what's that? Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to know if she had a different name on there. Sergeant Brook Road. Yeah, right. No. Okay.
Sergeant Brook Road. Subdivision or Sergeant Brook.
Yeah, that's a name. It's she put Sergeant Brook Road. I just had it. Get rid of it. Moved it. Yeah, she just said Sergeant Brook Road.
Okay.
And that's was it. I think it's called on the plan that we have. Um. Oh, her letter's not dated. I was gonna reference a date.
It it came in an email.
Oh, okay.
I got it in an email from Scott McFarlane.
August eighth.
August eighth.
Okay, yeah. Oh, oh, I see. Okay. When you just look at the letter, it looks just like it's just floating out there in the middle of nowhere, but the back of it is the August eighth.
So Heidi.
Yes. Uh, I'm just trying to clean it up a little bit. Upon finding no alternative location or route. Uh, to the property, do you think?
Access to the property.
Access to the property.
Root about or route to access the property.
Sure.
Okay, upon finding no alternative location or route to access the property outside of stream protect outside of the stream protection district. And. Um. Oh, and an alternate access request was denied by a budding property owner, sergeant, the sergeant.
I'm gonna correct you on that one real quick, because I'm gonna use the map like uh Christie said. It's from the Som Sound subdivision LLC.
Okay, that's instead Sergeant Brook.
Yeah, but Som Sound subdivision LLC President Nancy Ho.
I was gonna ask you what her title was. I was like, who gave permission?
She's the, she's the owner. She's LLC president.
Yep, yep. No, that's great. That's great detail.
Owner.
Som Sound subdivision LLC President Nancy Ho.
Okay, so upon finding no alternate, no alternative location. No alternate location or route to access the property outside the stream protection district. And an alternate access request was denied by the Som Sound, uh I'm sorry, was denied by a budding property owners, the Som Sound subdivision LLC President Nancy Ho. The location of the proposed. Uh, row, uh, yeah, row. Driveway. Is in the best practicable area as determined by the board. Uh, and they find that standards of section sixty nine three have been met.
By the board and D E P.
Yeah, and so determined by the board. And approved by the D E P, the board finds standards of section sixty nine three have been met.
I I mean, the the only thing when I.
Sixteen nine point three.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
I just wonder, I'm not trying to wordsmith, but I want, is there any value in the first sentence being more in the affirmative than the negative? So. Like something like the proposed road location as detailed in the application. Is the only feasible location because did it, did it, did it, did a? Like, I feel like the first sentence that she read was like, kind of like. It was almost like a double negative.
Okay, you're gonna have to say it over again, Christie.
Well, I don't want to say it over again unless people think it matters.
No, I like what she said. It's driveway, not a road.
Oh, right. That's gonna go. What's that?
Heidi is gonna hit it again here.
Okay.
But I need to hear from you.
Okay, so what I have. Yeah, the proposed driveway location. As detailed in the application. Is the, is the only feasible location. And then it's something like because and then just list all that evidentiary information.
But the board finds.
Yeah.
Yeah, so because.
Yeah.
All right. The board finds the proposed driveway location as detailed in the application is the only feasible location because. Uh, no alternative location or route to access the property was found. All right, was found outside the stream protection district. And an alternate access request was denied by a budding property owners, Som Sound subdivision LLC President Nancy Ho. The um. Therefore, the location of the proposed driveway is in the best practicable area as determined by the board and as approved by the D E P. And meets the standards of section sixty nine three. Oh, and standards of section six three nine, six C nine point three have been met.
I think that's good. I the only tiny, tiny suggestion would be is as determined by the D E P. Permit of rule, rule of permit.
Permit by rule.
Thank you, whichever way that goes. Permit by rule.
All right, one more time. Yes.
Sure.
The board finds the proposed driveway location as detailed in the application is the only feasible location because. No alternative location or route to access the property was found outside the stream protection district. And an alternate access request to. An alternate access request was denied by abutting property owners, Som Sound subdivision LLC President Nancy Ho. Therefore. Uh, therefore, the location of the proposed driveway is in the best practicable area. As determined by the board and as determined by the D E P permit by rule. The board finds the standards of section six three nine, six C nine point three have been met.
I think it's great. I I know we mentioned the date from the letter from uh Nancy Ho. Do we need to include that in there, Kim, or is it just part of the record?
It's part of the record.
Okay. I have, I have no other wordsmithing edits from this brain.
All right, you had started that motion. Are you gonna make that motion, Christie?
Yes.
We need.
That would behoove. So move Anastasia.
And Tracy just seconded?
Yes.
Great. Okay.
All right. All those in favor? Christie?
Anastasia, I. Anastasia, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, second.
I.
I.
Gloria.
Gloria.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore.
I.
Myself, William Manley. I. And then we, is that it? Are there any permit conditions? No permit conditions, so then we circle back to our approval vote and we press play. So all those in favor of approving the application, Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore.
I.
Gloria.
Gloria.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller.
Myself, William Manley. I. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And come on in and sign the approval when you guys can.
Thank you.
Right, that was technically under other. Is there any other other? All right, well. I guess it's our favorite point on the agenda, and then we've got adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
It asked for a second.
Right, any further discussion? None heard, Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore.
I.
Gloria.
Gloria.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller.
I.
Myself, William Manley. I. Thanks for joining us at the Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting of August twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. See you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Bye.